This meeting will now come to order. Clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of July 5th, 2016. We have one item on our study session agenda tonight, and that is strategic plan for human services. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. And just a minor edit to what you just said, it's human resources. It's the fundamental plan that our human resources department had been working on to follow the lead of the council policy goal with respect to making sure that the city of Peoria is an employer of choice. And we pride ourselves on that. We pride ourselves on great employee relations, competitive compensation, great working conditions, safe working environment, and outstanding equipment. And as a part of that, we wanted to make sure that we had a plan which truly reflected those priorities. We've been operationalizing those priorities for some time. We wanted to make sure that we had a plan that captured that and captured the council's policy goal with respect to those important elements. So what Laura Kraus, our human resources director, and her staff have been doing over the last year probably, many months at any rate, have been putting pen to paper to have a variety of committees and staff work done to prepare what she's about to present to you. What this will become is the beginning of some additional conversation. What this is, we want to get the council's impression and sense of this tonight to make sure that we're hitting the mark, that what we're presenting is consistent with your policy direction. If it is, then she'll go back with her staff. And what we see is pieces coming forward to you that will ultimately be the principles of sound human resources management. Much as we have those principles for our financial management and our water management, we see that we'll eventually have those codified by the council as our principles of sound human resources management as well. So that's kind of my little introduction. And I'll turn it over to Laura Kraus, our human resources director, and she can go into greater detail and introduce her co-panelists.
Thank you, Carl. And good evening, mayor and council. Christine Nickel is to my right. She's a human resource manager for Human Resources. And to my left is DeeDee Gates. She's the other human resource manager in Human Resources. And then to my far right is Tracy Booth. She's the organizational development coordinator. And I ask that they attend tonight because they were all very instrumental in developing this plan, and I wanted to make sure that they received recognition. I also ask that they attend in case there's some specific questions that you ask that I'm not aware of the answer, and they can help me with those questions. Thank you for having all of us. As Carl mentioned, this fiscal year, a major goal for HR was to develop a strategic plan, one that focused on the next three to five years, one that would be used as a blueprint for maintaining the high-quality workforce and our employer of choice status, one that was aligned with organizational goals, and one that would result in the principles of sound HR management, you know, a document that could be used for future HR practices. And in the next few minutes, I'll take some time telling you a little bit about how we got to the plan, what's in the plan, our next steps, and be able to answer any questions you might have. HR should be a function that helps an organization meet their goals. So it's important that our plan started with a review of the direction and goals of the city. So we looked very closely at your council goals, your 24-month council goals, which of course are community building, enhancing current services, preserving natural environment, total planning, economic development, and leadership and image. And then we looked closely at the organizational strategic goals based on their strategic plan, which is providing excellent customer service, enhancing organizational development, increasing information sharing, promoting sustainability, and promoting civic engagement. So we wanted to make sure that our strategic plan aligned with all of those goals, as well as the individual department goals within the city. So we looked very closely at the department strategic plans and talked with the department directors as well. We then developed an overall timeline with the intent to implement the plan in July of this year, so this month. In phase one, we gathered a lot of data relating to human resources. We looked at specifically the city and the different trends outside the city, some information that we obtained very interesting. For example, 18 percent of city employees can retire in the next five years. That's a pretty significant number. Our turnover rate is a little under 10 percent, which is a very respectful turnover rate and very consistent with other Valley cities. We also did some research on the next generation. Obviously, we need to be prepared for the workforce that's coming. So we looked at what they are looking for in a workforce. Very interesting. They're looking at things a little differently than we might be looking. They want some short-term work. Most individuals in that generation are not looking for a job that, you know, they'll stay with in the next 30 years. They're looking for something that's maybe two years, three years, four years. And so we really wanted to focus on that as well. They're also more concerned about work-life balance than our generation or other generations might be, and they're focused on technology and doing everything through their iPhones. You know, this generation's never had a situation where they didn't have an iPhone. So this is important that we look at this as we focus on HR for the next five years. We also looked at some of the creative benefits that other organizations are offering. And then using this information, we identified key challenges we could expect to see and potential solutions in phase two. And then we just finished up phase three, which was the development of the plan and the goals and objectives. And we expect to begin implementation upon your approval. So under the umbrella of the employer of choice, we identified four major focus areas. And those included talent acquisition, basically recruiting the right people for the right position at the right time, talent development, so once we've recruited them, developing them, at least giving them the opportunities to develop, talent engagement, so once they're in, we make sure that they're engaged and happy, and talent retention, we want to keep those good employees. So those are the four major focus areas that we looked at in this plan. With those four major focus areas, we developed major goals and objectives for each of them. And as I go through each of these focus areas, you will hear me say that we do many of these things very well, because I believe that we do great things in city Peoria. So many of the things that we want to look at doing better is just really in preparation for the future, making sure that we're ready for the next three to five years, and in preparation for those challenges that we might face. We have many award-winning programs in the city, but we want to be prepared. You'll also hear me say many times that many of these objectives will start with research or review or look at. None of this is necessarily set in stone. We want to do some research and see if it's the best thing for the city and look at the budget implications as well. So under talent acquisition, first goal is intensify recruitment efforts to attract a highly qualified, diverse, and multi-generational workforce. Of course, we've got to get the right people in at the right time. And there's some things that we can do a little differently than we're doing now. We want to expand our community partnerships for diverse targeted talent requisitions. That's an objective under that goal. We want to review and implement a flexible recruitment process. We've done a few things in that area already in the last six months. We revised the process a little bit to ensure that it's easier to get through the process for both the applicants as well as managers. So we want to continue to look at that and implement any changes that we feel is necessary. We want to promote the city of Peoria as an employer of choice. We know it's an employer of choice, and we do a lot of good communication out there about what great things the city's doing, but let's take it up maybe one more level and promote how we are an employer of choice as well. So that's an objective under that goal. Another objective is research and consider implementation of referral incentives for employees. So if I'm a great employee, I love working for city of Peoria, I'm going to talk about city of Peoria to my friends. And then if I take it one step further and say, why don't you apply for a position with city of Peoria? And then I bring in some great people, then maybe we want to look at incentives for doing that for our current employees. That's one of the objectives under that goal. And then lastly, under that goal, research and consider hiring incentives for select positions within the city, something that's been done in other organizations, something we've done in the past. And again, just for certain positions, we might want to look at, you know, an hiring incentive. So goal two, under talent acquisition, is enhancing career development opportunities. And for this area, we're really focused more on people coming in, not necessarily people that are still here. That's another goal. This is people coming in, so we want to look at expanding paid and unpaid internship programs. We want to expand our volunteer program, and we want to expand our apprenticeship programs under that goal. And the last goal in talent acquisition is developing alternative methods to meet the city's increasing talent needs. So we're, again, doing some research on these three things. They might be a little interesting, a little different than what we're accustomed, but we want to look at ways to meet talent needs. So instead of just focusing on the actual position and filling that position, we want to look at different ways to make sure that the needs of the city are met. So the three objectives under that is first, research and consider implementation of a resource pool for rotation of short to midterm job functions, also known as the gig pool. I don't know if you've heard of that. That's kind of the latest talk out in the human resources industry is the gig pool. So again, it's taking into consideration this next generation and how they just like short-term gigs. So we do a gig pool where we have a number of individuals that have different talents and that, you know, they might just be utilized in certain areas. So for example, if IT needs someone that has a certain IT background, and we have someone in this gig pool that has that background, doesn't want to necessarily be a full-time employee, but wants to work a little bit with us. So we could deploy that individual to IT. So we want to look at a gig pool. We also want to look at researching and increasing talent acquisition for candidates with disabilities. Number of individuals in the city of Peoria that have disabilities may not be a fit necessarily for some of the positions that we hire for, but there's a way that we can get them to meet our talent needs. And then lastly, research and consider implementation of an inmate program. So using inmates, not to replace employees at all, but to add to our employee base right now and do some of the things that we need around city hall or other areas. Under talent development, the goal is expanding and enhancing leadership development programs. We have an award-winning leadership development program now. So again, we are doing great things here in Peoria, but we wanted to just enhance that a little bit and promote it even more. So the objective under expanding leadership programs includes enhancing and promoting that program, and then also enhancing and promoting a mentorship program. We've done a little bit of that over the years, and we want to really focus more on that mentorship program. Goal two is implementing formal succession planning. I was pleased when councilmember Finn mentioned our succession planning program at a recent council meeting and how pleased he was with how well we were doing in that area. And we are doing very well. We'd like to just focus a little more on it and make some more formal succession programs and resources for target positions so we can do it throughout the city and really look at a number of different positions. We can also identify career paths for positions citywide and implement individual development plan templates and resources under that formal succession planning goal. Goal three, under talent development, is expanding and enhancing professional development opportunities. We want to increase professional development opportunities to employees, improve communication methods so that they know what's out there for the professional development, and research and consider implementation of a job shadow and rotation program. Under talent engagement, first goal is enhancing employee engagement. Again, we do very well in this area. We do an employee survey every year. We look at the results of that and really kind of take some effort to refine our different programs. We want to continue that, expand it, maybe look at other ways of looking at employee satisfaction, and then recommend actions based on those results. Goal two, enhancing employee communication. Again, we do very well. Carl does a city talk on a regular basis. We do e-announcements. We do newsletters. We do different meetings to really communicate to our employees. We want to look at ways to enhance that, look at alternative methods, again, to just kind of increase it a little bit. Also want to expand the new employee orientation so that we're really making sure that the new employees coming in are given the appropriate information to start their job, and then develop and implement a department onboarding program so they get orientated, and then they have a certain process where they get onboarded as well. Goal three is expanding employee appreciation and recognition efforts. Again, we do very well, but we want to look at some ways that we can increase that, do some more employee desired appreciation efforts, and expand ways that we provide employee Under talent retention, we want to establish a compensation rewards framework tailored to advancing the city as an employer of choice. We of course have a compensation program now. We have a rewards program now. We want to look closer at what we're offering as an employer of choice and the compensation that we are providing. So we want to research and consider implementation of a strategy for providing cost of living adjustments to individual employee salaries. Again, just researching and considering, we're not saying that this is definitely what we would recommend. We just want to look at it closely to see if it's something that we should consider. Want to research and consider the implementation of a compensation philosophy that allows for market competitive salary ranges. We do look at the market right now when we consider compensation, but again, we want to elevate that and look at it a little closer. And research and consider providing variable pay based on the attainment of performance goals. And lastly, research and consider implementation of a milestone tenure non-financial rewards program for employees. Second goal is determining diverse benefit programs. We have an outstanding benefit program, very traditional, but it's very good compared to what other cities offer. We want to look at whether there might be some non-traditional benefits that we want to look at for employees. And under that same determined diverse benefit program, sorry, Christine, want to research the feasibility of different healthcare delivery methods as well. Under goal three, developing work-life balance strategy. These are some things that we're looking at. As far as other organizations, this is what they do. So we want to research these. It includes the feasibility of an onsite childcare center, feasibility of a paid time-off program, feasibility of a paid parental leave program, and feasibility of a newborn program for parents returning to the workplace. Goal four is promoting culture of workplace wellness. We have an award-winning wellness program that you'll be hearing about at future city council meetings. But we want to research and consider implementation of an enhanced strategy to identify initiatives and focus on key wellness indicators. And we want to establish a healthy workplace culture in collaboration with leadership, employees, and elected officials. And the last goal under talent retention is retaining a high-performing workforce, a high-performing, diverse, and multi-generational workforce. We want to look at methods that will provide constructive feedback from separated employees regarding the work environment. Right now, we do an exit interview of all employees that are leaving. It's voluntary, of course, so sometimes we get some good data and sometimes we don't. We like to look closer at that to see if we can figure out better ways to get good information from employees. The latest HR trend is to do stay interviews. So interview employees, asking them why they stay and use that information. So we'll look at that. Analyze and consider feedback from employees separating for reasons other than retirement and minimize factors that may cause employees to seek other opportunities for work environment issues. So we'll look closely at that. So those are our goals and objectives. A lot to do, right? So we looked at the next five years, and we identified a time to begin working on each goal. And here's a snapshot of which goal we will be getting in each year. We'd love to do all of this year one, but obviously, we can't do that. So we've kind of spread it out a little bit. And the first year, we'll begin working on the recruitment efforts that I mentioned, leadership development, succession planning, employee engagement and communication, compensation and rewards, and a culture of workplace wellness. And then you'll see how year two and year three, year four and five, we'll still be doing some of the things that we started in year one, year two, and year three. So we don't have anything that we're actually starting. And then for each objective that I just went through with you, we have already developed some very comprehensive action plans, and you see just a snapshot of one of those here. We wanted to do that to make sure we could do everything that we wanted to do in the next five years, but we've not included it as part of the plan because it's very lengthy. But of course, they're open to your review at any time. So you have the full report for your review when you're at your leisure. And at a future city council meeting, we hope to have this on the agenda for formal adoption, and we're available to answer any questions.
If I may just add one item before you go into questions. And Laura covered this, but she covered it quickly. It won't be just her staff that's working on this. This is a collaborative effort, excuse me, across the organization, all of the departments, our organized labor partners, all of our employees.
Thank you, Carl.
Well, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Yes, councilmember Finn.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted to go back and just kind of ask a few questions on some numbers you threw out there. I think you said 18 percent are able to retire in how, how much time?
In five years.
In five years, okay. And I think you mentioned a turnover rate of 10 percent?
Approximately 10 percent, a little under 10 percent.
So a couple of questions on that. Is that a just overall, or is that within a certain amount of time of employment within the first five years? Or what does that 10 percent represent?
That was those that left, and that was, I believe, in calendar year 2015. So that's 10 percent of our employees left during that calendar year of 15.
And would that include retirements? That's everything?
Everything.
So total turnover rate of 10 percent?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I'm on a roll. Do you mind if I keep going?
No.
Okay, great. And you also mentioned some targeted groups, if you will, disabilities. I thought I heard you say inmates.
You did hear me say inmates.
I was paying attention, okay.
Yeah, I thought I heard that too.
I didn't hear you mention veterans at all. Was that not part of it, or was that something, was there any discussion on vets?
That's a very good point. There wasn't discussion, but definitely should include veterans. I would agree with that.
I would. Yeah, okay. And then tell me a little bit about, I think you called it a stay interview as opposed to an exit interview. That really poked me up because I did an exit interview this morning, first thing off of a three-day weekend, first five minutes that I'm in the office. But as I sat there and thought about that, had I done a stay interview, you know, a few months ago, maybe I could have prevented that exit interview and had a much better morning when I came in. So tell me a little bit about how that works.
Okay. Similar to an exit interview, ask them the same type of questions, but you're getting them before they leave. So right now, we ask on the exit interview why you're leaving, how is your supervisor, how were your work conditions? Those same kind of questions then would be asked to those employees that are here. It's almost like an engagement survey, but a stay interview. And so we catch them before they leave, and we find out why they're staying. And then at the same time, if they tell us they've got some concerns or some issues, then we can fix that before they exit.
And is that random? Is it targeted, or you just pull a few names each month and do a stay interview with them? How does that work?
We could do it either way. We haven't really researched exactly how we would implement it throughout the city.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were doing that, you're not doing that yet.
No.
You're going to put that into place?
The exit interview we do now. We do not do stay interviews.
Okay.
Other organizations, what we've researched, have done some stay interviews.
I think that's brilliant. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Patanna?
Thank you, mayor. I have a question about work-life balance. First time I ever heard of that was from my daughter-in-law, and I, being of the baby boomer generation, I had no clue what that meant. And so I asked her, and she said, well, I don't want to work the traditional eight-to-five. I want to, I prefer to work from home every day of the week, but if I can't, at least a couple of days of the week. And interestingly enough, she found that job. And so my question is, it doesn't seem to me that the jobs that the city offers right now lend themselves very well to a work-life balance kind of position. If you're the person working in the water department, you've got to be there every day to take the money, and you can't really work from home. So how will human resources deal with that particular issue?
That's a great question. Thank you. There's a number of different things that we can look at. And the city of Peoria, as you know now, has a 410 schedule for most of our employees. In some organizations, that's considered a work-life balance, having that extra day off.
Okay.
Things like job sharing, if you want to work part-time, is considered maybe more of a work-life balance type issue. Having a daycare center onsite helps have that work-life balance. So we'll look at all those different options and see what things we can offer. There's no set answer because everybody's got different issues, different concerns, different life, and so we'll look at the different strategies.
Okay. Also, I saw on the last page of your report that you were looking at potentially hiring a multi-generational workforce. Am I assuming then that you would be looking at potentially hiring older Americans for positions? And how old would you consider old?
Trent lightly here. Very careful.
I want to see if I can still get a job.
We will look at every generation. We think it's important, or I do anyway, that we have all different generations, all different levels, all different age groups of employees working in the city. Brings a different perspective. The new generation, the millennials coming in, they have a very different perspective than we do, and the older generation has a different perspective as well. So we'll look at having a good mix of everything.
So that's changed because it used to be if you were approaching 45 or 50, you were kind of out of the work-life, you know, potential of getting a job. And so that's changed, obviously. And so if you're 40 or 50 years old, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can't qualify for a job here at the city.
Correct. And speaking from a 50-some-year-old, definitely, we hire those.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. I too am really interested in the stay interviews. I really love that concept, and it's different than, you know, the traditional exit interviews. Can you give me an example of how you see, how you anticipate using that information to strengthen a department or to coach a manager on how to improve practices within that area?
Thank you. Good question. We will look at it similar to how we look at the employee engagement information now as we look at trends. So if we were to interview several staff in one department, and they mentioned their issues with their supervisor, we hear that over and over again, then we'll really target that supervisor for some professional development opportunities and some leadership development opportunities, and really make sure that that supervisor is prepared to deal with those employees, if that's what we find. If we find that it's a benefit issue, perhaps they're leaving or they're thinking about leaving, or they're staying because of benefits, we'll look closely at that as well. So it will depend on what the answers are and how we can target the solutions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
I too really enjoyed your presentation.
Thank you.
Millennials are known not to like the little gray cubicles that every single person here, well, except us. Every single employee lives in a little gray cubicle all over. So has any thought been given to physical redesign? At least, I don't know how you would do it, if you would do a whole area or if you would do half of it, but I know millennials don't like solitary work. They like the creativeness of being able to talk across tables and desks and visit with each other and share creative ideas. So have you thought about that? Is that included anywhere in here, the physical plant?
It's a very good question. It's not actually listed as one of our objectives, but I think it's something that's worth looking at. You look at some of the big organizations now that are hiring a lot of the younger generation, and they, you're right, have that type of workspace, and they have cafeterias and bean bags and a whole different situation than what we're used to. So that's definitely something that we would consider.
I think that's really critical if you are looking to hire millennials because they're not attached to work. They don't care if they work or not, especially not for us. If we don't meet their work environment necessities or requirements, they'll just go somewhere else. They're not tied to a paycheck like my generation was. They like their freedom, their, well, you know better than I do probably, but I think that's something we really will have to look into if we hope to really engage the millennial generation, which is a big generation right now of really talented workers.
I agree.
Any other questions? Okay, well, it was a really good presentation, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. I am really interested in seeing you get to the point where you have developed the principles of sound human resource management. I think that is a really big goal and a great goal for us because it helps us always to know how to make policy decisions as we move along and things change. So it's a great tool for the city council as well as, you know, an operating document for you. And so you showed us a five-year plan here. Is that how long you believe it's going to be before you can get to the development of that document?
No, I think we can certainly develop that document in the next year or so.
Okay.
Based on our review of the different things that we're looking at. Yeah.
Okay, so will we be hearing from you again as you're working on that?
Absolutely.
Good. Well, we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Swenson, anything else?
That's all we've got. Thanks.
All right, then we are adjourned until our 7 o'clock meeting. All right, then we are adjourned until our seven o'clock meeting.